Good evening. We're going to call this meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation with Councilman Walter Jones. Following that, we'll have a pledge of allegiance. So please stand with me.
Will you bow your head as we pray? Dear wise and loving Father, we want to thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here. We thank you for our abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for our health, the ability to fulfill our callings, and for friendship that we all have together. Thank you for allowing us to be involved in useful work and the honor of bearing responsibilities that would be pleasing in your sight. We thank you, as always, for the freedom that you've bestowed upon us as a nation and as a city. I pray for all of our employees, our residents, and our council as we deliberate tonight. We ask all this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. We appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Roll call, please, Mr. Burgett.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gualtney?
Here.
Mr. Tames? Mr. Higginbotham?
Here.
Mr. Wolverton?
Here.
Mr. McCluskey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Wyatt?
Here.
Mrs. Andrus?
Here.
Mr. Wright?
Here.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Here. So we have a quorum. The next item is reading the minutes from the February 25th, 2019 meeting. We will carry that over until the next meeting next week. We've got quite a few board vacancies that we want to discuss. Let me start with the Homewood Environmental Commission at-large nomination. We now have three applicants for that job, two of whom we have not interviewed. So I think we'll try to schedule those interviews for next week, April, and make an appointment. The first meeting in April, I think that would be... Is that okay? Mr. Higginbotham?
I believe that's reasonable, trying to squeeze them in this week before next week's meeting.
Right.
It's a little rush, so I think targeting the first meeting in April makes good sense.
Well, we certainly... We know we have one good applicant because we've interviewed he, and so we certainly want to give the other two every consideration.
And I don't know both of the other two applicants. I know one of them because he copied me, and he is an outstanding applicant, so...
There you go. Isn't it great when we have hard decisions to make because of highly qualified individuals? All right. Historic Preservation Commission, that closed on 2/25. We have one applicant. Does anyone other than me want to make that nomination?
I would love to make that nomination. We would love to nominate Eddie Griffith. Is he here tonight? Hey, Mr. Griffith. We are excited to have him join the Homewood Historic Preservation Board.
Great. So we have a motion from Ms. Andrus, a second from...
Second.
Second from Mr. Wright. All right. All in favor for the appointment of Mr. Eddie Griffith, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. All right. Lastly, the Ward Three spot on the Homewood Historic Preservation Commission. We've got a replacement for Ms. Snow who needs to step down. And like I said, this is Ward Three. So guys, what... We have not opened this yet.
How long do we need to open it for?
We want to leave it open until the first meeting in April.
First meeting in April.
Yeah. That's good.
Okay, let's...
April the 8th.
So April the 8th. We'll leave it open through April 8th, Mr. Burgett, if you'll record that.
Sure.
And by the way, our city clerk, Ms. Salter, is ill, so Mr. Burgett, we certainly appreciate him stepping in and handling this for her. So we will open that as of now. All right. We have four amendments to the agenda. Three of them are committee referral. Let me read those three first. 11-03-19, request to address safety concerns and consider traffic calming measures along Oak Grove Road between Raleigh Avenue and Hall Avenue. This is requested by both Mr. Wolverton and Mr. Higginbotham. This will be referred to public safety, Mr. McCluskey. 12-03-19, request for presentation of Chamber of Commerce updates requested by Mr. Wyatt and Meredith Drennan. This will be referred to finance, Mr. Jones. 13-03-19, request for consideration for financial incentives for Sanford's new stadium project, requested by Mrs. Smith, Mr. Wyatt, and Mr. Tames. And again, this will be referred to our finance committee. And lastly, for new business tonight, 14-03-19, request to approve the AT&amp;T First Net Contract for Fire and Rescue Department, requested by Mr. Jones. So we have those four items. Chair would welcome...
Mr. President?
Yes?
May I add one to committee referral?
A committee referral? Yes, you can.
All right.
I'm kidding. Go ahead.
It's a request to address how condos and apartments handle their garbage/trash issues as residents move in and out. And that was asked to be placed on the agenda by Ms. Jackie Langlo.
All right. So that should be special issues, I would guess. Ms. Smith?
Mm-hmm.
That's in your world. So we'll make that 15-03-19. Mr. Burgett?
I have 15.
Huh?
Did you say 15?
15-03-19.
15-03-19.
We have a 14-03.
Thank you, sir.
I also have a question in regards to, and this, I guess, is more just cleanup. The one that you had asked for traffic calming measures on 11-03-19?
Yes.
There's also an 05-03-19 that has designated a section of Oak Grove Road as no parking. Could those be combined at all to where we only have one agenda item? Does anybody have a problem with that?
I have no objection to combining them. They're not the same thing, but we can discuss all of them.
But if you're discussing Oak Grove Road as a whole and measures...
It's fine with me.
Yeah.
The no parking would extend a little further than Hall, but...
Sure.
Yeah. I have no problem with that either.
Okay. Just so we're not talking...
Sure.
Mr. Kendrick is a...
They're all somewhat related.
Of...
Can we do that? I guess that's my question.
We've got a 15...
Maybe one.
Okay. So do we have to take a vote to eliminate 15-03-19 that was on the agenda?
Is it 15 or...
It's going to be 05-03-19.
05, I'm sorry. 05-03-19.
You can drop it between the two of you.
Well, probably need to drop it now, just since it's a committee referral item. Shouldn't we? No, we can... I'll tell you what. We can approve the committee referral item with that coddle soul that we're dropping that.
Okay.
That'll work. That'll work. Okay. Chair would welcome a motion for approval of said amendments.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Jones, second from Mr. McCluskey. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that is in place. Next item is the consent agenda. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
Second.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Gualtney, second from Mr. Higginbotham. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now we move on to the old business agenda. We'll start with 13-01-19, which is the public hearing that is being continued from February 25th for consideration of a variance to the sign ordinance at 1651 Independence Drive, requested by Mr. Cobb. Mr. Cobb, where are we on this item?
Emailed Mr. Brandt back and forth today, and I would say let us drop it as you... We talked about last week.
All right.
And when he's ready, we'll revisit this issue.
Move to drop. All right. Motion from Mr. Higginbotham, second from Mr... Not Mr. Wyatt, Mr. Wright. Okay, there we go. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that is dropped. Thank you very much. All right. 16-02-19, public hearing set for tonight at 6:00 PM for a variance to the sign ordinance at 2617 Eighteenth Place South, requested by Bethel AME Church and Mr. Cobb. We'll start with a report from special issues. Ms. Smith?
Actually, it's a fence ordinance that they're asking for.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's okay. No problem.
No, you're right.
The committee met last week. We voted five to zero to refer this item out to the full council without a recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mm-hmm.
All right, let's start with opening the public hearing. Mr. Cobb?
Yes, sir. This came to us because the air conditioning units at the church have been stolen. They replaced the units. It's a corner lot. However, it's not on this area immediately behind a church, so it's mid-block. It's not on the corner. It's between... Behind their building before you get in their parking lot. Also, it's behind the retaining wall, so it's not any kind of a traffic site distance issue. But that was their request to protect their new... They like to keep their new units.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Cobb? Thank you, sir.
I got pictures.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? We would be happy to hear from you. Yes, ma'am. If you will, come forward and see Mr. Burgett. Put your name and address, and then approach the microphone, please. We need a record.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Your name is?
Yes, my name is Phyllis Shepherd, a longtime, lifelong member of Bethel AME Church Homewood. I am treasurer as well as steward slash trustee, and we'd like to thank you for your consideration in this matter. These are preventative measures. We would like to secure our units, and of course, it happens that a satellite dish is incidental to that as well.
Oh.
So it's against the church wall, actually, on 27th Avenue side in the rear of the church.
All right. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Jones?
And I'm so sorry that this happened to you. Did you have any video, or are you looking maybe at additional security moving forward? Maybe a video?
Oh, definitely. Definitely.
Yeah.
We understand, Ms. Shepherd. No one likes to spend that money, but...
No, because you're spending enough as it is, right?
That's true.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not... Goodness. If not, we will close this public hearing, and I welcome any comments from our council.
I would move to approve. Second.
We have a motion from Ms. Smith. We have a second from Ms. Andrus. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that is unanimous, and that's Resolution 1931. Okay. 17-02-19, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a variance to the fence ordinance at 1518 Valley Place, requested by Bayless, Yaddell, and Mr. Cobb. And we'll start with a report from special issues. Ms. Smith?
Yes. Met last week, voted five to zero to refer this item out without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion made by Mr. McCluskey and seconded by Mr. Gualtney.
All right. Thank you. We will now open the public hearing. Mr. Cobb?
Yes, sir. This is a request for a fence along the creek wall. There were Valley... Valley Place dead ends. There's a drawing over there where the... Where there's really not a circle. The road goes straight. But the fence there, if you were in their front yard, you could just walk right off into the creek, and it's about a seven, eight-foot drop. And also keep the kids' balls and things from running off into creek. But there's some shrubbery there. I think it's going to pretty much hide the fence. And you see, it's not really an enclosure, other than it's just kind of a safety measure, preventive measure.
Any other questions of Mr. Cobb? I know we ask in questions in committee meetings, but...
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who wants to speak to this particular matter? Please come forward and sign in. I would point out, even though you sign in for committee meetings, it's a separate sign in for council. And please state your name and address.
My name is Bayless Whitehead. I live at 1518 Valley Place. Like Mr. Cobb said, it really has just become a safety issue for us in the street, particularly a lot of the kids that play on the street. It is a pretty dramatic drop-off once you get down to the... Down to the creek when the... Obviously, the water's not up. I think from a sightline standpoint, one thing that... Just to reiterate, as far as the shrubbery goes, the fence is designed to be no more than four feet tall, horizontal slats. We're not talking about an eight-foot privacy fence. And really, it'll disappear into the landscaping based on where... How my yard goes and where that fence will go. So again, safety issue, and I think we also talked about the water drainage, and that wouldn't be a problem because it actually would not be buried into the ground in any way other than the post. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And for a record, I know we discussed this at the committee meeting, but for the record, what type of fence is it?
It's going to be a horizontal-slat wood fence. Again, it'll step down with the... With the grade of the land, and so designed to be no more than four feet high at any point.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry I slaughtered you last night.
No.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? If not, we will close this public hearing. Any comments that anyone wants to make?
I'll let it through.
Motion from Mr. McCluskey, second from Ms. Smith. No.
Mr. Gualtney.
I'm left-handed. I tend to go...
Whatever.
I tend to go to this side.
Yeah, really. Yeah.
Again, Mr. McCluskey, Mr. Gualtney. No other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That is Resolution 1932, and that is approved. Now, 18-02-19, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a variance to the sign ordinance at 201 Vulcan Road, requested by Robert Norris, Mr. Cobb. First, report from special issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, sir. The committee met last week.
Mr. Norris. I'm going.
Yeah, gotcha. Committee met last week and voted five to zero to refer this item back out to full council without a recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Mr. McCluskey.
Thank you, ma'am. We will now open this public hearing. Start with you, Mr. Cobb.
Yes, sir. This is a request to our sign variance. The sign ordinance is a one-attached sign at 50 square feet max. This is a request for a one-attached sign at a larger size, and we have more than one option here. And I'll let Mr. Norris go through each option.
Well, this is the one that we want.
Option three.
It was designed for safety, visibility, so if it's too small, you do this, and if you look at it, you can't see it. The other thing is, is we're trying to eliminate the Pizza Hut effect, and the signs up there across that banner, it sort of covers it up. We had... I think we had a smaller one that I showed at the council... At the zoning meeting, but that was... They started making them, and they just kept making them different sizes, and that was just one of the in-between sizes. This is a... The next one, the one that you showed, it's a little bit smaller. We reduced it. Brian? Option two? Option two.
Four.
Or four, whatever it is. Four.
Yes, sir. Number four.
Four, I'm sorry.
A little smaller.
That's a little smaller if like, you have to say, hey, we beat him down. Beat us down to that. If that'd be all right. I mean, it's... We prefer the big one, but that would be... It still sort of serves the purpose of getting rid of that parapet up there, and that was the idea. And other than a monument sign at the Vulcan Road entrance, I don't think we'll have any other issues on signage. Maybe just something on the door, you know, so they could identify. So your request is either option three or option four, just for clarity? Yes. Okay. Any questions of Mr. Norris?
Mr. Norris, I think you told us this in the committee meeting, but just for the record, the sign will be illuminated, correct? It'll be backlit?
Right. It'd be a LED backlit.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. Any other questions? I'm sorry, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Norris, so your preference is three. Is that correct? I just wanted to be clear as to what your preference is.
My preference is three.
Would be three. Okay.
Three.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Yes, sir. Mr. Higginbotham?
Just to clarify, I'm sorry. I'm a little blind. So what exactly on three and four are the variance amounts on the square footage, Mr. Cobb?
Number three is 283.5 square feet.
Number four?
Number four is 251.6.
And, Mr. Cobb, did we decide... I know there was... I think we made an estimate as to how far the building is from 65...
Somebody calculated.
It was 200... We looked at that.
It was 200 and...
201 or 211 feet.
Okay. 204.
204. Well, we're all stinky close there, so...
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
And it is all commercial.
No, we understand. Any other questions?
Yeah. Mr. Norris, so I'm just looking at option three and option four. Can you live with either one of those?
We can. I mean, I understand. Like I said, it was a... I don't want to come in here and say, we've got to have that, you know? I mean, we want to cover up this thing at the top.
Option four just looks a little more pleasing.
That's okay. That's okay.
For interstate.
We just couldn't have that little one where it was so small that it actually looked like...
I think option four is going to bring in more clients for you, actually.
Oh, well. That's what we're trying to do.
So, you know...
We're just, you know...
We are... We are appreciative.
Is this some sort of attorney-to-attorney speak?
You may not get the visually impaired ones in there, but you ought to be able to get sufficient, because they'll say it looks better, so...
We're trying to turn a... What is it? A silk... A Salsier into a silk purse.
Okay.
And we're doing everything we can to do that.
We are appreciative of the work you're doing on the building, so that's very much.
I appreciate the consideration on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Mr. Wright, I tend to agree with you, but it's the distance between the building and I-65 is, what, did we say 210 feet?
214.
204.
I don't know what the regulations are with regard to the distance.
But I know that Mr. Cobb went out there and walked it, so...
I don't know.
I jumped it, just like I used to.
Let's be serious.
That was the...
What is... I don't understand the distance. Is there a... Something that has to do with distance from the road?
Just for...
You know...
Just visibility.
It's not like it's...
At 50 square feet, you can read it.
You can't read... No, you can't. People will be able to see it, you know?
You can't see it.
It's a pretty good distance from the interstate and, you know, so anyway, that was my only...
The floor and decor one that we showed is actually much closer to the freeway than ours is because it's on the front of the building. The building's closer to the right-of-way, and ours is because of the way the roof goes away, it takes it further away from the road. That's true.
Yeah.
I think even the three would be... The other one, the small... The smaller one would be... Would still be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. That'd be all right. Is that it? Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Mr. Wolverton?
Just to clarify, is the back... The backlighting is allowed under the sign ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Or... Okay. I couldn't remember. And I know we talked about the floor and decor signs last week. I didn't know if we had actually gotten a measurement on the...
On which ones?
On the interstate side sign for floor and decor.
I have that.
Okay. Do you mind sharing that?
Not at all.
Floor and decor is 418 square feet. I knew you didn't want me to spit that out.
So that's their big floor and decor on the interstate side?
Yes, sir.
One of their signs.
Right.
Thank you. We appreciate it, no, we're good. Is there anyone else who wants to speak to this matter? Hold on, thank you, we'll close the public hearing. Comments from the council?
I would move to approve option number four.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion from Ms. Andrews, second from Mr. Wright. What?
I did have one comment before we voted, if you don't mind.
We'll pause your motion.
Well, you do have a discussion on motions, so I think I'm left to say. I just wanted to make clear that I am very, very happy for this business to be there. I am very happy about the money you're investing into the building. I feel very confident you're about to get this variance from the council. But for the record, I can't vote for the variance, nor did I vote for floor and decor, just to be clear. So, but I wanted you to know that I'm happy you're there, it has nothing to do with your business, or I wish you great success.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
Similarly, I just, I spoke to some of the guys that are right next door to you last week at an open house they had. So, obviously, very thankful that something is coming in and renewing the space and fixing it up. I've seen some of the siding work and stuff that you guys have already been working on. So I'm thankful that you're there as well. And I do think, just for the sake of the record, that 210-foot measurement was to the edge of the building, not to the edge of where the sign will actually be. So it's actually a little bit further when you're talking site distance, and that was from the outside lane, not inside lane. So, just to clarify, a little bit of the measurements, but thank you for what you're doing there.
All right, all in favor of approval of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we know we have one abstention, do we have any others?
We're going to stand.
Oh, okay, you're voting no. So this is a, what about you, Mr. Wolverton?
I voted yes.
Okay, so this is a nine-to-one approval, thank you. And this will be Resolution 1933. Thank you, Mr. Norris, we appreciate it, sir. All right, 190219, request for consideration, Mr. Pew, I'm going to let you work your way here while I'm reading it. Request for consideration of adoption of resolution placing a lien on the property located at 2531 Eighteenth Place South for the cost of abatement in the amount of $7,500. As a note, this property was declared a public nuisance February 26, 2018. Report, Mr. Pew.
Yes, sir, I have provided you all with a demolition cost report, should be fairly self-explanatory. I don't believe there's really much anything else to tell you. All notifications have been made, I've even spoken with the family, so everyone's up to speed on what we're doing here.
All right, good. Thank you, sir. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval of this request. Motion by Mr. Higginbotham, second by Mr. Gualtney. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? That is Resolution 1934, and that is approved. 140119, bid opening held February 25 at 4:30 p.m. for Patriot Park Connector, requested by Greg Cobb. We'll start with a report from you, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the Finance Committee met on March 4 at 5 o'clock, and after hearing a report from Mr. Cobb, we recommended five to zero to reject all bids and negotiate with Bull's Construction Group with the approval of funding of $133,219 from the Sidewalk Construction Fund, five to zero coming out of Finance.
Great, so we have a motion from Finance. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, I'm going to assume no other discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? That is unanimous, and that is Resolution 1935. Okay, next item is 140219, request to amend fiscal year 2018-2019 budgets, requested by Mr. Burgett, our Finance Director, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the Finance Committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval of the amendments to the fiscal year budget.
All right, we have a motion from Finance, do we have any questions or comments on this item? Yes, Mr. Wolverton?
Just to make sure the record is correct, it should be 2019 budgets?
Well, I mean, it's a good question.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
So it's 1920 budget instead of 1819?
It's 1819, but on our agenda, at least, it's 2109.
Oh, okay, it is, you're right, yeah, okay, 2019, yes, yes, you're right, it is a type of, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That is true. Resolution 1936, we'll move on to 170119, which was a request for consideration to add sidewalks on Wellington Road, requested by Michelle Hyde and Ms. Smith. We'll get a report from Public Works first, Mr. Wright.
Yes, Mr. President, the committee met and voted four to zero with one abstention to add Wellington Road to the sidewalk list. The motion was made by Counselor Wyatt and seconded by Counselor Gualtney. Counselor Wolverton abstained.
All right, thank you. So, we have a motion from Public Works, any discussion? If not, all in favor, just please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, that is, 170119 is added to that list. 220219, request to remove city light at Ventura, requested by Chris Tucker. We'll start with a report from Public Works. Mr. Wright?
Yes, Mr. President, the committee met, and after hearing a report from Mr. Randy Hamley, voted five to zero to relocate the light on Ventura and replace it with an LED light. The motion was made by Counselor Gualtney and seconded by Counselor Wyatt.
All right, because we don't have the exact location yet, the formal description of where that should be, we're going to carry this over. So, 220919 is carried over to next week. Mr. Tucker, I'll be happy to let you speak to this matter, but I'll also say-
How many exact, I mean, it's a tight triangle, I mean, how big of an area is there really to debate about?
I'll let Ms. Kendrick answer that.
You're talking about a right-of-way easement, or the location of the actual hole?
Yeah, an easement for us to be on the 45 block.
15 feet south of the property line?
If you'll provide that to our engineering department this week, the good news is, we're having a meeting this time next week, and we can certainly consider it then, okay?
I didn't hear, well, I heard that, but I didn't know that the meeting was, you know, contingent from that.
Yes.
So it will be approved this time next week?
I didn't say it'd be approved, I said it'll be considered next week, with a legal description, thank you, sir. All right, next item, 270119, request for consideration to add stop signs at the intersection of Woodbine Drive and Lakewood Drive, requested by Stephanie Holly and Ms. Councilmember Smith. A report from Public Safety, Mr. McCluskey.
Yes, the committee did meet, after hearing a report from Mr. Hamley, we had originally voted to recommend taking down a stop sign at Woodbine, putting up a stop sign at Lakewood. The motion was made by Counselor Wolverton, seconded by Counselor Wyatt. But since that meeting-
Yes.
-we have had several discussions with neighbors, and if it's okay, we'd like to take this back to Public Safety for further discussion and see if we can work out.
Absolutely, Mr. McCluskey, that's what we'll do, sir. 211118, request for presentation to update City Council on the I Tree Landscape Tools. This was Amy Milan, our HEC president, report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
My report's going to be very similar to Mr. McCluskey's. We heard a presentation from Dr. Beau Broadbeck last weekend, last week, about the I tools, software that you can use to do tree inventories, and we voted to approve having Beau do some training with volunteers that would be recruited by the HEC to perform that tree. But after speaking with Ms. Milan, she would like us to send it back to Special Issues for some further discussion, they'd like a little bit more direction in terms of what that tree inventory might include, so if you don't mind, refer it back to Special Issues.
I will refer that back to Special Issues, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
I will tell you, one of the considerations, and I thought it was an impressive presentation.
Me, too.
One of the considerations is, not too dissimilarly, but for very different reasons than why Alabama Power referred tree list, don't try to say that quickly. I think that HEC could also provide us, through the help from Auburn, with a preferred tree list, because I didn't know that water oaks were bad and red oaks were good, I thought all oaks were good. So, if I'm the only one that didn't know that, I have a feeling I might not be unique. So I think there's some opportunity for us to educate the citizens of Homewood on that particular, yeah.
Right, and I think she just wanted to make sure that they were going to provide the most, you know, effective and, you know, effective information they could provide, so they wanted a little bit more direction, so we appreciate, they appreciate.
Okay, well, we'll do that, Mr. Gualtney?
I was just going to add that our tree ordinance that's in the Planning Commission now, it contains a list of desirable and non-desirable trees, also categorized by size, basically under-story trees, so once it finally makes its way out of the Planning Commission, it'll be, it'll have that list.
But the important thing is not that we don't just have it, but that we publish it.
Yeah.
And I'm sure our folks with Ms. Cromwell and others will help us with that, okay? All right, with that, committee, Chair would welcome a motion for approval with the dropping of 050319. Who's doing that?
Second.
Motion from Mr. McCluskey, second from?
Second.
Ms. Andrews, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And that is unanimous. All right, all right, we've got a couple, a few other items. 090319, request to set a public hearing referral to Planning and Development Committee for consideration to amend the development plan at 2762 B.M., Montgomery Street, applicant being Coker Holdings, for owner Tim Coker, for the purpose of relocate existing commercial building and replace with a new two-story, 6,000-square-foot mixed-use building. My understanding, the Planning Commission had a unanimous vote of six-zero for a favorable recommendation of the amendment to the previous approved development plan, should we set that for April 8, Mr.? That's what I'm saying, April 8, I'm going to set it for April 8 at 6:00 p.m., okay? But we're also going to refer that back to P and D. Who takes Mr. Thames' place when? Okay, so, if you'll record that, I would appreciate that, okay. 110319, huh? Okay. 110319, request to address safety concerns and consider traffic calming measures, oh, wait a minute, no, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, all of this is part of committee referral. Okay, we're down to two, three items. 090319, request to set a hearing for consideration, well, we just did that, okay. All right, now, 100319, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for a period of February 25, 2019 through March 10, 2019, Mr. Jones.
I'll defer to Mr. Wright.
Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Jones, and thank you, Mr. President. It was very nice and quiet, peaceful, as I had the opportunity to review the receipts over this weekend, and thank you, Robert, for helping us answer the questions, and all looked quite good, and so I would ask that the receipts through March 10, 2019 be approved.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Wright, do we have second? Second from Mr. Higginbotham. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That is unanimous, and that's 1937. All right, one final item, 140319, request to approve the AT&amp;T FirstNet contract for fire and rescue, requested by Mr. Jones, motion. Chair, we welcome a motion.
Yes, sir.
Or is there a report to go with that?
Well, no, there's not a report, we had discussed, this was, unfortunately, was not put on the last council agenda two weeks ago, so that it could have come to Finance, so there was a little bit of confusion with that, so in our last Finance meeting, we briefly discussed it. It's a contract Mr. Kendrick has reviewed, it's an AT&amp;T FirstNet contract for the Fire Department, Brandon Broadhead is here, if anyone has any questions, but it's budgeted, and it was just an oversight to not have it go through Finance, but we do have, and the chief is here as well, but we do have that budgeted, and it's, any questions?
Is it within the budgeted amount, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Okay.
We're just replacing 23 of our devices, we currently have a southern link with a new AT&amp;T First Responder Network, we've been working on it for a couple of months with Mr. Zanati, I'm sorry. Been working on the project a couple of months with Mr. Zanati, and finally came to negotiation with AT&amp;T. Everything's well within our budget, actually, we're going to make some money by going to do devices that are smartphones, while saving a little bit of money every month. So I'm here for any specific questions you may have.
Any questions? Mr. Wolverton, you look like you want to ask a question.
Question, just a comment, I feel like I've heard that report before, in terms of communication devices, but it's in jest.
Have you got, have you got any numbers that you could share with us?
I do, we will be replacing 23 of our current devices for a total of $574.97 a month. That's about $6 more than we currently pay, however, we don't have unlimited data, we do not have the ability to prioritize those devices with our current networks. The new will be completely unlimited everything, so I don't have to worry about opening that bill every month, because that does scare me a little bit. The 23 devices, 10 of those are standby devices, they will not be used on a daily basis, they gave us those for a penny a month, just to hold the number, those are only activated in the case of an emergency or a major disaster in the city. I think it's a better deal for us, we did a ton of research on AT&amp;T and their new FirstNet network, and they seem to be the leader in the first response network.
Great, thank you. If there are no other questions, the Chair would love a motion.
Yeah, I would move that we approve the AT&amp;T FirstNet contract for the Fire Department, I believe that we have a, we'll have a resolution prepared for it. Okay, so.
And I would second that.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Jones, second from Mrs. Smith, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? That is Resolution 19-
Mr. President, I would like to abstain.
38, I'm sorry, are you abstaining?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have a nine for, none against, and one abstention. All right, and that finished, thank you, and that finishes our regular agenda, and Mayor, we'd love to hear from you. Okay. I will remind all of you council members that because of spring break, our next meeting is next Monday night, so if there are committees that need to meet before then, we need to schedule them before. Mr. Gualtney?
I would simply note, just a reminder, the sign-up is now live on RosedaleDiasService.com, so I'm looking forward to seeing lots of council members' names in that list, so I'll see you April 13 for RosedaleDiasService at 8:30. That's it.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Mr. Chairman, I think the only thing I have is, I do want to, for supporting the unexpected number associated with the Patriot Park Connector and moving that project forward, it's been discussed for over a decade, and it is gratifying to see it move forward, and hopefully we'll get that done sometime this year.
Great, thank you. Mr. Wolverton? In your Washington's.
Mike just, yes, I will absolutely second what Mike just said, I know that there are other sidewalks that we're looking to build, and, you know, I know that budgets can't always be met with where we expect them to be, so I appreciate everybody's flexibility on approving this one, as I do think it is a momentous occasion, and the pool and walking to school, it just helps accessibility for an, you know, yeah, a large number of people, basically, and I think it's obviously something that's been looked at for quite some time, I'm glad we were able to see it happen while we're here, so, so thank you guys for your willingness there. I just wanted to say that the Wine 10K a couple of weeks ago went fantastically, the race was sold out, there were a lot of people there, it was pretty exciting, thank you to the Police Department for all the road closures that they were able to help with. It was a wet one, so thanks to my kids for putting up with being soaking wet in the stroller for the whole race. And then also just a notice that the color run for Hall Kent Elementary is this coming Sunday, if you haven't signed up, you still can. What else? The campout, we were going to have a neighborhood campout this past weekend, and unfortunately, Mother Nature had a different plan, so just be on the lookout for an updated date for that to be rescheduled, so.
Great. Let me take some folks out of order, Mr. Jones, are we going to need a Finance meeting?
We are, 15 minutes, at 5 o'clock.
Okay, 5 o'clock for 15 minutes, thank you, for Finance. Now, Mr. McCluskey?
Of course, jump over me to get the water, that's fine, that's fine. I'm trying to think whether, because, well, I mean, I have a lot on my agenda, and-
Would half an hour do it?
Yeah, well, and that's, I guess my question is, because, again, we're put in this situation, which we've been put in a lot this year so far, as we've had to have committees before council, if there's anything, I mean, I know there's a lot of stuff on public safety, but is there anything that's just pressing that we have to take care of? That one is, okay, all right, well, let's, I'll call it for, you said five, so we'll call it for five, give me 30 minutes, I think we'll be fine, for public safety and, okay, okay. If anybody wants to try and dethrone the champs this Sunday at the cornhole tournament for the Homewood Athletic Foundation, you can bring it, that's right.
You could, you could almost, like, drop the mic after that, right, I understand.
There's no way I'm going to even try for that.
Ms. Smith? Wait a minute, Mr. Jones, was there anything you wanted to comment on?
No, I just wanted to say, quickly, speaking of athletics, that, I mean, we're as frustrated as anybody else about everything not being finished, but it has been the rain, and they have been working as hard as they can, and so hopefully we're going to be finished with that soon, but the original plan that was presented to us was February 12, I believe. Right, and, right, and we're so close for everything opening, so just want to thank them for their hard work and, you know, getting that finished, so that was all I had.
Thank you, Ms. Smith?
Andy, did Brett mention to you about scheduling public, I mean, planning and development, he does have an item?
Yeah, we added an item tonight that we probably need to go, yeah.
I don't think it'll take long, but I think-
Yeah.
Would you want to make his item at 5:45, and then we can go a little, no, what I'm saying, we could do 5:45, and then we could go earlier for Special Issues.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll just, yeah, is that a problem with special, yeah, is that a problem with Special Issues people, to come early? I mean, I know it's not everybody's favorite.
Just remember, spring break.
So, planning and development is going to be at 5:45, and, okay?
Special Issues will be?
And then Special Issues, we'll do, I guess, let's see, one, two, three. I think what I'll do is, I'll just take, I'll do 4:45, and I'll probably just carry over a couple of things that we can move, you know what, no, I think I have a presentation that's supposed to be happening.
So let's do 4:30.
Let's do 4:30, just to be safe, thank you.
Thank you.
And in addition to the Athletic Foundation having their fundraiser on Sunday, the College Choice Foundation is having theirs as well at Good People Brewery, and it's actually, I think it's like a 30-minute crossover period, like, when theirs is ending, College Choices is starting, so. Yes, exactly, by the time he's celebrating his big victory, people can head on over for some celebratory beers at Good People for the College Choice Foundation. And I'm heading from here to a varsity soccer game at Thompson, and the boys' team is currently 7-0 and 2, and ranked number one in the state, so hoping for Metro tournaments this week, so hoping for some good results, we've got a lot of games this week, so against some pretty good teams, so.
Great, safe travels, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Mr. Wyatt?
So, at the risk of being redundant, we do still have some spots left for teams, if anyone wants to try to be Patrick, and I believe, I think Brett may have a team as well, but even if you don't have a team, please come out, it's at Pizzeria GM, starting at 1 o'clock, there will be food and drinks, and you can watch a lot of good cornhole, and there's stuff for the kids, blowups for the kids to play in, and so feel free to come on out on Sunday.
Sounds great, Ms. Andrews?
I wanted to tell everyone that they cannot make it out to see the soccer, to come out and watch Homewood High School tennis, we have got a great team this year, and we have a huge match against Pell City on Thursday, we've got a match tomorrow against Ramsey, and then we have on Friday for a tournament, and we were in Alex City last week, played Opelika and Ben Russell, both in our division, and we swept them, so we're really in a good position, trying to make state. Also wanted to thank Park and Rec, the new tennis courts look great, they're not new- courts look great. They're not new, but they've got wind screens and new lighting, and it looks great, and I know they're gonna resurface them in May, and the building out there just looks gorgeous. So, it really looks nice out there. It's exciting.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Yes, I think I'll skip over Public Works.
Okay.
I mean, if I have to add it, I'll double-check, but given the schedule and everything, they seem to be quite minor issues, and I don't think I'll add it, and I have nothing further.
Great.
Thank you.
Quick personal story. I have an eight-year-old grandson playing baseball up in our new complex, and a chance, over the last 10 days or so, to spend a lot of time visiting with, found it interesting, the coaches, the hardcore coaches, multiple ones of them said to me, this, this artificial infield is fictastic, because it has the bounce just like a traditional dirt wood without the rocks and the stones. So, the kids are really, the young people are really learning how to play infield on this. The moms said to me, without fail, we do not have to dig the red clay out of our kids' uniforms. So, I'm telling you, everything I got was positive accolades. I know that those expenditures were a tremendous amount of money, but I'm telling you, we made an awful lot of Homewoodians happy with what we've done for their children and their moms. So, that was all a good thing. So, with that, we'll see you next week, and we'll stand...